Hi, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee. It is Tuesday, October 7th, and we are here in the National North Boardroom. And it is 6:01 PM. So I'm gonna do a roll call. I am here. And Ms. Lopez?
Here.
Okay. And Mr. Claffey is not here this evening. We also have Mr. Gray, Dr. Andre, and Mr. Smith. And we have a special guest tonight. We have Dylan Cormier, who is an Eagle Scout candidate, who will be introducing his service project proposal. So you can go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name is Dylan Cormier. I'm with Troop 19. And I have my Eagle project, so it's gonna be at Charlotte Ave Elementary School for the special needs kids. They just added a courtyard area. And what I'll be doing is I'll be adding a sound wall and a sensory wall. So there'll be sounds they can kind of play with and explore, things like that. Also, things that they can touch and feel, right? Because each kid is different on what they, you know, what they like versus what they don't like. So there's options. There's a variety. So we will be adding a whole bunch of stuff for the sound wall and the sensory wall. Everything. We will, we have planned to be weatherproof and everything. So when it rains or snows, things like that, it'll be able to withstand through the winter, things like that. If, I know you have the packet at the end. There's a few pictures of things we'll be adding. Those are just kind of some examples. So some of the things for like the sound wall is those like triangles that you like hit and make sounds with, bells, things like that. And then one of the biggest things is that I've seen before is PVC pipe. So we'll have like different sizes of pipes and different lengths. And they'll be able to hit them and they'll make different sounds. And there's like those connector, like adapter pieces that go on the pipe. So those will make different sounds, things like that. A whole bunch of stuff that they can explore with and be creative with and kind of think outside the box. We can also add things like pans to where they can hit it. And there's gonna be a, it's not like a drumstick, but it's one of those sticks that have like the, like the balls on top. And they can hit with those. And that'll be attached to the wall too, so that'll stay there. And they just kind of hit with the sounds, make sounds and stuff like that. And if they don't like the sounds and everything, they can go to the side and there's a sensory wall. So there'll be things like steering wheels, like those plastic steering wheels that they can kind of play with. There'll be another thing with like texture. It's like a hand and it has like different textures on it. So they can play with that. Another thing is, I don't know what it's called, but there's a picture on there. It's like different like rectangles. I don't know if you see it. And so that, the, there's like different noodles kind of with it. And they can kind of make shapes with it and put it on there. And then things like that, where there's like extra pieces where they need to be like taken out. We'll have like a nice bag to put them in and the teachers can kind of take those and just have a spot. It won't be that much stuff that they'll have to carry in and out all the time. But there'll be some stuff that's just better if it's just inside, things like that. And then we're also gonna add like a roof. So if it rains and stuff, the roof will be kind of like helpful, right? Things like that. And then another thing is that, so when we put the posts up, they're gonna be a total of 12 feet. It's gonna be four feet in the ground, which should be deep enough to where it's past the frost line. So when the ground freezes, it'll be past that, which is what we want. It'll be good. There'll be one foot of clearance and then the board will start and that'll go for five feet. It's not gonna take up the whole space, you know, because they're young, they're smaller. So there'll be enough space for them to do everything. And then the roof will take up about two feet and that'll come out. Be enough to kind of cover them if it rains, things like that. That's about all I have.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. I think we'll see if either one of the board members have a couple of questions. I just wanted to add, I know that you're probably gonna be working with Mr. Smith throughout this. Why a sensory wall, I guess? Why did you decide on this specific project? I think we're excited. I'm sure Charlotte Ave is very excited. I love the idea. So what made you decide on this for your project?
Yeah, so I live near Charlotte Ave and that's where I went to school for my elementary school years. So that was definitely when I thought of what I wanted to do for my Eagle project. That was one of the main ones. When I went to kind of talk to her about, you know, things we can add, I was really looking for anything to kind of just support the school in any way, because it's where I went. They kind of helped me, so I'm giving back, helping them. And they just added, or they were adding that courtyard as I was there. So it was like perfect timing. And I think it's just really nice. And I, I've seen before where schools in the past, somebody in my troop made a sound wall at another school, another elementary school. I thought that was a good idea, so. But it's for like the intensive need kids, so, you know, some of them might not like those loud sounds. So that's why I also had the idea of the sensory wall. So if they're not really for all those sounds and stuff, we have that other spot, that other area, where they can also feel included and do other things like that and be creative.
Awesome. Questions? I was wondering about the little hands that are different textures. Do those stay on the wall all the time, or?
Yeah, so how it's gonna go is, the wall's gonna be kind of like a fence looking at it. So it's just like a design. It'll be like a fence. And then we're gonna have another piece of wood where we're gonna like engrave the prints of the hands. So the hands will go in that wood and that'll be on top. So they'll stay in place and they'll be screwed in. And they're gonna, they're gonna stay there. And we'll, we'll make sure that it's secure and things like that. And make sure it'll be able to last through the winter and things like that. But yeah, it's gonna stay on there.
Okay.
Full time.
All right, that's great. Do you have any questions, Ms. Lopez?
So no questions. I just wanted to say thank you for taking this opportunity to give back to the school that you went to. I think that it's amazing that you drew all this and put all this together and created this service project as an Eagle Scout. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything more you think you need for support from us as the school district to get you started?
No, so everything that I will be doing, I'll have fundraisers for, things like that. And when it comes to like support and people, through my scouting years, I've done so much. I have a lot of connections now, so I'll have plenty of people, so I'm ready to go.
All right. Before you go, Mr. Smith, Dr. Andre?
A couple of questions. I think I, I think these boards are basically up against the brick wall. Is that correct?
So they're gonna, I think, so the picture, so they're gonna come out a little because, so there's the wall and then there's like a little area, kind of. So they're gonna be out a little, but they'll be pretty close to the wall.
Okay. Yeah, we looked at it quickly and we don't think there's any utility lines in a way. But we'll still have to do DigSafe.
Yeah, so that's what, one of the things that I'm gonna contact DigSafe, let them know. They'll kind of see the area. If it's clear and it's good, then we'll start. We're gonna dig the holes. And the goal is if it gets approved before it starts getting cold and everything, we're gonna have to dig the holes, kind of put some posts in there just as placeholders. We're gonna dig the holes before the ground is too cold to kind of dig. We'll put posts in there and cover it up, so it's not in the way, but at least the holes are there. So once it starts to warm up and the snow is gone, the ground will still be cold, but there'll be the holes there. So as soon as DigSafe approves it and we're good to go, we're gonna start digging those holes, put the posts, cover it up so nobody trips. And then we'll be good to go as soon as the winter is done.
DigSafe's usually pretty quick, a matter of a few days.
Okay, that's good.
I was unclear about, you talked about a roof.
Yes.
I think over one of the structures. How is that attached?
Yeah, so we're gonna go with all the logistics when we actually get the wood. It's easier to see with the wood rather than just kind of drawing it on. But, so the posts, there's enough clearance, so there's gonna be two feet up for us to work with. And it's just gonna be a roof that's gonna kind of come out. And then just like a little bit of an overhang, enough to where it covers the boards. So when it rains, it kind of just, it's a little bit of clearance. So it'll help with its like longevity and everything like that.
So it's attached to the posts?
Yes.
Not attached to the building at all?
No, no, no. Nothing's attached to the building. It's all freestanding.
If it was attached to the building, we'd have to go to the building department and all sorts of hassles.
Yeah, it's gonna be freestanding and everything.
Okay.
Nothing with fire?
Nothing with fire. Nope. That's the main question. If it wasn't attached to the building, then we're okay. And it's not in the way of any egress points out of the school, right? There's no blocking a doorway, anything like that.
So it'll be next to the door. I think there's a picture of the drawing. It's gonna be next to the door though. And then there's, it's near classrooms, but the classrooms it's near are their classrooms. So when, you know, there's gonna be loud sounds and stuff like that, the classrooms that it would kind of distract are their classrooms, so they'll be outside anyways. But it's kind of away from doors, other classrooms that are still in, like in session, things like that.
Do you know how much space there'll be between the board and the doors?
Um, not exactly. Not exactly where they're gonna be placed, no. Not yet.
Okay.
But we'll make sure. And then I'm gonna talk with the principal and everything like that. And we'll get all the details on the distance of what, like exactly where everything's gonna go and just try to find the best spot for the two walls.
Okay.
From a long-term maintenance standpoint, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, but with projects like this, if there's any maintenance in future years, I think that's something we as a district would take care of. Do you see there being a lot of maintenance or some upkeep to this project?
I don't think so, just because the stuff that we're using, the wood's gonna be deep enough to where it'll last long, a long time. The stuff that we're using, we're using AB foam. So it's basically gonna go, like when we kind of dig the hole, you know, the foam will go in there and it's really hard. It lasts a while. When I actually had my Eagle project meeting with the Eagle Board, that was what they recommended and they've done several of these kind of projects. So they've approved a bunch of these and there's still a lot standing. So another thing is when it comes to the sensory wall and the sound wall, there's things that are meant to go outside. I know there's a picture, I think you have, of, it's like a steering wheel kind of thing for like a pirate ship. They're meant for outside, so things like that are gonna last long. And the type of wood that we're gonna use is gonna have like a stain over it, so it's meant to be outside. Everything will be meant to go outside and it should last a pretty long time.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions?
Let's see, one of the supplies you have is pizza.
Pizza, yes. Yeah, so that's when everyone's over helping and just kind of, to get them to wanna come, we'll have pizza. Yep.
You'll have to keep us posted on, you know, work with Mr. Smith and keep us posted on when you're gonna be over there. We'll definitely make sure that we get the social media point of contact over for some pictures and then of course the finished project and end results, so we can push it out on social media.
Awesome.
Awesome. Yeah, I can't wait to see it when it's finished. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Eagle Scout project for a sensory board at Charlotte Ave Elementary School as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, passes. You're good to go.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Let us know if you need anything and thank you so much for the community's support.
Thank you. And then is there an email that I could have? Just because once I get the signature here, thank you. Once I get the signature for this, I have to go back to the Eagle Board. Once they see that I have the signature, whether it's just either an email from you guys or just any kind of form that proves that I got it approved, then they're gonna do their final approval, so I can start.
Yep. I'll give you a signature now and a contact.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next thing on the agenda is the purchase of a file storage system. Is that, are you gonna talk about that, Mr. Smith, or are you taking off now?
I'm taking off now.
Okay, well, have a good night. Thanks for coming. It's always nice to see you. You too. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. So next thing on the agenda, ELL purchase. So this is a purchase for our Welcome Center. Actually, it's some storage that we need. The ELL slash Welcome Center went ahead and got three separate quotes. The first two you can see with School Specialty is fairly similar. And then, you know, there was a massive kind of scanning, reboxing and archiving of some files. So our recommendation is to go with School Specialty for an amount not to exceed $31,804.20. And this is actually gonna come from the Welcome Center furnitures and fixtures line out of the operating budget.
Okay, now I looked at all three of the systems. And of course, the one with the scanning and everything, like $200,000, which is crazy. But the first two, the difference in price was so minimal and the difference in quality was like really, was really big. So I had no problem with going with the Donigan Systems one. Do you have any questions, Ms. Lopez? Okay, then. I'll go, I'll go ahead and make a motion. A motion to approve the purchase of file storage system from Donigan Systems at a cost not to exceed $31,804.20. Funding is to come from the Welcome Center Furniture and Fixtures account.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so Reagan, I apologize. So I'm looking at this from the Welcome Center team. So it does say from Donigan System at a cost not to exceed $31,000. But it looks like School Specialty actually is the $31,000, where Donigan Systems, kind of that B, delivery and install is $32,875. So my understanding from, let me just double check something unless something changed. My understanding from the team, and I apologize, we didn't catch this prior to, I thought they were going with Donigan's Systems, which is B.
It does say Donigan Systems in here, and I would certainly be in favor of that. I think probably the amount is just wrong.
Okay, so can I addend or make an addendum to the motion? Can I please ask that we do the motion for Donigan System at a cost not to exceed $32,875?
Okay. Are you okay with that, Ms. Lopez? Okay. All right, I'll make the motion again. A motion to approve the purchase of file storage system from Donigan Systems at a cost not to exceed $32,835.00. Funding to come from the Welcome Center Furniture and Fixtures account.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that's great. I'm sorry I didn't catch that. I read it just earlier tonight. I should have realized.
I didn't either. Sorry, I was on vacation, so I didn't look at it when it came through. I'm so sorry. All right, so the next item on the agenda actually is truly just informational purposes. I think throughout what you folks have seen is I have tried to bring forward, we as a district, making sure that we're fully transparent. So this information in front of you is truly just informational purposes only related to what we are spending grant funds on for the '25, '26 Title II and Title IV grants. Some of this stuff is a repeat based off of just prior years. Some of this information that you have in front of you, we have done in years past. But again, I wanted to bring forward just some information related to how we're spending some of our federal grant money.
And I think Dr. Andre's here to help me with any specific questions related to some of the materials, if there are specific questions.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, I don't recall the Your Way partnership. Could you just explain what that is?
Yeah, so it's a new partnership. It's actually a company working on twofolds. One, they're working with the administration team on change management. We always talk about, you know, how do we manage change as school leaders? Your Way is a company that, their research is based out of Stanford University with Dr. Ball. It's on the model of generative change. So we're actually being, getting some professional learning on how do we, as leaders, manage to change process? What's the reflective aspect of it? How do we provide organizational supports? And so they're helping us with change management. And how do we lead different initiatives? How do we bring in some cohesion, some unity? So really working with our administrative staff on that aspect of it. They also do a big component on AI. So it's a safe AI platform. They meet all the data privacy agreements, student safety. So we've been using LearningWALK data. We've been talking about LearningWALKs for the last year or so. So through the change management, the AI is actually, we created a tool that will analyze some of our LearningWALK data and then help our building principals design faculty meetings or design professional development opportunities for their teachers in order to use some of that LearningWALK data. The teachers also can use the Your Way platform, taking the LearningWALK data or the Plus framework, all our ELL work from the last couple of years. And so we created another tool in this platform that the teachers can actually say, this is the standard I want to address. Here's the instructional strategy that I want to address. Here's the makeup of my students. Design me a lesson.
Oh my goodness, wow.
Right, and so it's all local-based. So that's some of the professional development on change management. And then also for teachers around how can they differentiate their lessons with their kids in front of them? And so it's a pretty powerful tool. And again, what we like about their AI is that they've met a certain amount of criteria for privacy if there is a breach and really have been well-vetted. So it's not just going into ChatGPT or somewhere else. So it's a controlled, teachers can actually share lesson plans. So I can, if I create a lesson plan, I can share it with you and vice versa. So it's actually a pretty neat platform. And if teachers have questions around differentiation, there's videos associated, so they can watch videos on how do I differentiate? So it's pretty, it's a nice platform. But again, that other aspect of it is, you know, we talk about change always happening. And I think it's really important for us to provide the professional learning for our administrators on how do we manage change and lead change.
Okay. It says it funds a digital learning support specialist?
So that's a different, yeah, so, and we, so I believe that position came in front of the HR Subcommittee a month or two ago at this point. So what we're looking on is how do we provide professional learning support? It's a person that will be working with teachers. If they have questions on how do I integrate technology into my lessons, this person will be working very closely with Chris Smith on supporting teachers.
Okay, so it's all gonna be funded through Title IVA, which is for professional development, right?
Exactly.
Okay, that's great.
If, sorry, if I can just add to Dr. Andre's point. So it's kind of exciting related to some of the federal grants, right? Because of what we're looking to do, we can go ahead and hire a new position, test it out, almost pilot it, and then kind of see where the future takes us with that specific role. So for this year, we are gonna fund it through Title IV. And as we move forward, we'll definitely do an assessment to see longer term if it's something we should continue to do as a district.
If this, if we want this digital learning support specialist, could we continue to fund it through Title IV?
Yeah, so eventually we will look at, you know, it's piloting and then when do you move it over to the operating budget?
Yeah.
The Your Way partnership is a two-week partnership, a two-year agreement. But again, we should be using, especially Title IV, on how do you use it as an incubator for innovation? And is it, to Mr. Gray's point, is it working? And if it is working, based on the data, then how do you scale it, right? So then how do you eventually transfer it over to an operating budget? And then backfill new initiatives through Title IV.
Okay. All right, did you have any questions, Ms. Lopez, on the Your Way or on anything else? Okay. All right, let's see. I was just wondering, I was curious about the Fun Hub. Is that, that's, and it, it's like, I know that like the reading is all supposed to be done in a certain way. Is Fun Hub supporting that and it's not something totally new and, okay?
It is fun, but it is, it's engaging. I mean, it's, it's another program that we had for, since COVID. And we've been funding it through there, but it is really student, let's see what. It's adaptable to where the students are. And so a student, whatever their skill needs, this learning to EdTech tool would actually adapt to what the student needs and provide that instruction and differentiation to make sure the student's meeting their goals.
Okay. All right, this sounds good. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I guess I have a question on these new programs or the programs that have been running since COVID. So these, how do the teachers feel about these programs? As the last one we just learned about, the Your Way partnership, is now writing their lesson plans?
So Your Way, it's, it started last year with the middle school. We have about, I just looked at the data the other day. It's over 100 teachers using it. So, and then we have a professional, on our next professional development day, there will be more teachers being exposed to the platform. So we see that number doubling relatively in a short period. It's mostly secondary teachers. The PD will be for elementary teachers, so we will see a higher number. The Fun Hub, actually, we were looking at the research and we, quite honestly, were looking at, do we stop it? And the teachers advocated very strongly to continue it.
Oh, cool. That's good. Nice.
I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty cool to see some of these interactive programs. I know having a couple of young daughters, myself, like one of them starting to get into some homework. So it's, it's interesting when she comes home and she's like, Mom, I have homework to do. And, you know, it's on her iPad as she's logging in. And I'm like, wow, we never had any of this when we grew up. It was all pen and paper, pencil and paper, right? So it definitely seems like it's a pretty fun and interactive, you know? I guess we're getting creative, right, to figure out ways to get them to understand their phonics or their reading or their math. So I think it's cool.
That's, it's great. I mean, like, it's, it's amazing what kids can do these days.
Yeah.
So that's great. Okay, well, thanks for bringing this, bringing this to us. Just thanks to know what's going on in the schools.
Absolutely. All right, the next thing on there is, or on the agenda, is our financial report. So just a few things to, I guess, point out. So we're three months into the fiscal year, not quite three months into the school year. At this point, we've used about 19% of our overall budget. You'll go ahead and start to see over the next several months, we'll definitely start to see that increase pretty drastically, especially as we start to encumberance a lot of the funds related to some of the contracts that have been approved in the last couple of months. If you scroll down to page 56, which is the monthly expenditure report, I always just try to like to point this out, but September's wages are definitely higher than August and July. You know, the reason for that, again, is there were two teacher pays in September. There was only one in August. And of course, our teaching staff doesn't work through the summer, so July's a little bit lighter. If we continue to kind of scroll down throughout, we can see contract services is starting to come in. You can see all the way over to the far right-hand side, kind of three columns to the end, you can see some of that money starting to be encumberanced, which is a good thing. Out of district, tuition out of district, we're starting to see some costs come in related to that as well. So nothing alarming, starting to get some invoices in related to transportation services. So all of that is coming in. There are a couple of credits throughout, just in case somebody was curious. Why are there a couple of negative numbers? Throughout finishing last fiscal year and the current fiscal year, there were some smaller credit memos that did come in. there were some smaller credit memos that did come in. But nothing, again, nothing to be alarm, alarming whatsoever. Pretty similar kind of expenditure at this point to this period of time last year. Again, I expect probably this conversation a month from now, there's going to be some drastic expenses starting to come in just based off of some of the contracts that we've seen come through that have been approved.
How do you decide which ones are encumbranced and which ones are not yet?
So we as a district and from a forecasting and budgeting standpoint, we absolutely should be doing a purchase order, which will encumbrance the funds on any contracts that are approved. I think if we remember back to some of the conversations we've had over the last couple of months, we as a district at this point, if a contract came forward, and I'm just using round numbers for now, but if a contract came forward for constellations and say it was just under $1 million, we as a district have not gone ahead and encumbranced the funds of $1 million. We made the judgment call to do a third, so 33%, until we can go ahead and move some of the wage money into contract services. Right? Because throughout these conversations over the last couple of months, we have said, based on the open special education positions that are out there, in order to support the student needs, we are gonna have to make some financial moves out of, excuse me, out of wages full-time and move it into that contract service bucket. So we were, we're in the process of really getting a handle on what I would call position control.
Okay.
Sorry, Dr. Andre.
No, I just want to give a concrete example and kind of put you on the spot. Right? So we talk about the contracts coming in for agencies. And we know a dollar amount not to exceed X. And so we're encumbering it, right? But we also have a transportation contract.
Yes.
So if I ask, ask your question, why aren't we encumbering transportation? And we're encumbering an agency?
Yep. Good question.
Is that a question?
Yeah, that was kind of, because I know that, like, I know the amount of the contracts that we had signed and everything.
Yep.
And I saw the encumbrance and I know that some of it has to be encumbrance. But I wasn't sure why that amount was there.
So we have a transportation contract, but that's not encumbered. But we have.
So the reason why transportation is not encumbranced, which might not be a bad thing to look at as we move forward in the future. It's not a practice we have done in the past. I think also we'll see as a district, these contract service contracts that have come forward, we haven't done purchase orders for them in the past either to truly encumbrance that money. Transportation, I would say, is slightly different in the sense of, yes, we have a contract with them. We have an amount that we're anticipating it will be, but we don't have the concrete number. So for instance, throughout the budget, we had said, I think it was 92 buses are on the road or 94 buses are on the road. And we want to go ahead and take two off the road to save some money. First student does invoice us on a monthly basis based off of the number of buses we're running, based off of the shuttle services that we're doing. So from a transportation standpoint, we don't go ahead and encumbrance that fund. There is nothing that comes out of those transportation lines, though. It is, invoices come in and they're, they're broken up between our regular education buses and then our special education buses. So it's not something I'm opposed to. I think I've been pushing all these POs, which I think is a change. Some folks are saying, why are we doing a purchase order and encumbranceing all the money? Right? And really, from a budgetary standpoint, it is the best procedure to move forward with. Does that help answer what you were looking for?
Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything, Ms. Lopez? Okay. Yeah, I, I looked at the, the totals for all of the, you know, the 61s and 68s, 50s and all that stuff. And they all looked, I mean, they're a little bit higher than last year, but not dramatically higher yet. So, so this is good. I was glad to see that they're kind of somewhat on track.
I think the biggest thing, honestly, that you'll see that is different again from last year, if you did a comparison timestamp, September of '24 to September of '25, we do have a substantial amount more sitting in that encumbrance bucket. And again, it's because we're doing purchase orders and we really should be doing purchase orders on contracts that we have agreements with.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thank you.
All right. The other thing that is in here is the transfer, excuse me, transfer report for September. Nothing specific to point out, but I guess, are there any specific questions related to the transfers that are in there?
I was just wondering what they're gonna do in the planetarium. Because I know we had talked about that at some meetings, about doing some updates over there. And I was wondering what we decided on.
Yeah. Great question. So they did decide to do some updates related to the systems that are over at the planetarium. There have been quite a few conversations internally to say, how do we utilize the planetarium more? Are there special field trips that we can do with some of our elementary kids? Are there special field trips that 21st Century could potentially do? At this point, I'm not aware that that's been 100% approved.
So in theory, we've had the conversations and it's been a good conversation. We are, how do we bring elementary students up? The hiccup that we're having right now at South, according to Mr. Richard, is that the teacher who teaches in the planetarium, he has three classes in there. So we have enough kids that they're actually using it more frequently. So it's harder to actually schedule in field trips. So we're having a good problem that we have enough kids in the, at the high school kids who are interested in, in, in the class, that it's actually harder to actually schedule field trips. So we're, we're having a good problem up there.
Yeah, it sounded like the amount was pretty small. It's only like $4,000 or $1,000. So I didn't, I knew it wasn't anything major, but I thought it might be nice to find out. Like, it's good that it's getting used.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think that's the only one that I had any.
I guess I had a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So how do we decide which account things are coming from to go to other things? I know that this has universally been my question. Why can't we take out of one number and put it in another? But I know that we, how, how do we decide what can be done? Because looking just at different things that you are sharing with us that, you know, are under the budgetary amount, you don't have to actually share these transfers, but just looking at them, wondering like why or how? It could come from, at this point in time, after the budget is set, it can go from one place to the other, but it usually can't.
Okay. So let me, I think I know what you're asking. So let me, I think, take a stab at answering you. And if I don't answer your question, please let me know. So remember when we do our budget, it truly is a snapshot in time. When we're setting up, whether it's the department budget or we're setting up the school budgets, it's truly a snapshot in time. They're budgeting to say, if we're at the high school at North, we're thinking we'll spend X, Y, and Z on all these different buckets and categories. Right? The school level, they have a certain budget that they have to stick to. Say it's $50,000 for the year. They sit with us throughout the budget season and say, here's where I'm basically putting the money. And things change throughout. We have to, based off of the policy, share any transfers with you folks that are over $1,000. And any transfers over $5,000, the Board of Ed does need to approve. So the policy does state, we as district office and under the guidance of the superintendent and the COO, we're able to meet these transfers. It comes to the Board of Education, Finance and Ops on a monthly basis for you folks to review. And I actually don't even know, and I think we always say this, is there a motion for you to approve it? I think there was a motion for the transfer report, but not so much on the financials. I think to answer your other question related to, why can we make these transfers? Right? We're able to go ahead and transfer money out of, again, I'm just picking a category, out of educational supplies once the school steps back and says, well, I no longer need X amount in this specific line item, educational supplies I'll take, for instance. But I actually need to move it into another line item in order to cover, maybe it's a transportation cost related to band. So they are able to go ahead and move the money. Again, it's a pot of money that they have. We don't necessarily throughout the year say, you start at $50,000. As a school, we give you $100,000. They have their pool of money that they can only spend that related to the school level. When it comes to transfers, we've talked a lot about what I call a two-digit roll-up. So one of the financial reports that is in here, it's the first set of reports, those are what we consider a two-digit roll-up. So as a district, everything gets rolled up to, I'll use the example of educational supplies, 61135. The transfers kind of give you more of like an itemized review of what the transfer is. I would tell you from my position and the business office, if for some reason there's a transfer that just doesn't seem right or that we're questioning, we definitely push back to the school or the department to say, hey, Mr. or Mrs. School District or, excuse me, Principal and Budget Secretary, why are you moving that money? So we've never sat in here and said, they can't transfer money related to operating. And I'm probably getting too wordy at this point and sharing too much. But I think it's really important to know and understand that operating budget, you can't take operating and move that money into special revenue and vice versa. You can't take your special revenue money and move that into your operating budget. So those are the transfers that we're not able to do. But we are able to make transfers out of the specific line items into other categories if throughout kind of that need, we're saying, hey, we need more money here versus the category we expected. Dr. Andre?
Yeah. And if I could just add on that, I think the other aspect, I'm just looking at entry 43, which is the transfer of $1,000. It's the same, I don't know what page that's on, but.
63.
Thank you. But it's a renew of a, of GIMKID school licensure, something that we had in the past. And what we're having is better conversations internally. It's still the same $1,000, $1,000. But instead of coding as ed supplies, it's actually a computer program. So we are hoping through getting better at a unified, you know, like a unified chart of accounts, that we're saying, what goes into ed supplies? So then if we run supports, building to building, we might be able to compare on how much are we spending in ed supplies compared to computer software compared to another category that all might be part of the 041160 unit. So really delineating to compare where we're going. So you might see some transfers just based on the description and it's better coded, and that's important as well. Or another one in here is about, there was an account not set up yet. And so now that the account is set up, the money was transferred into there. But on a bigger picture, we should be analyzing from school to school, how much are we spending on each category in the operating budget? One of my goals and dreams would be that all of the New Hampshire districts are, have a unified chart of account. So I can compare on how much is Hollis Brookline spending on ed supplies compared to Nashua, compared to Manchester, compared to Concord. That would be the ultimate, and that's the important on making sure we're coding things correctly.
I guess my question still remains like, because it wasn't set up. I hear you. And, and thank you for the detailed answers. My, I guess my question altogether is, if we say a building gets $5,000 for educational supplies, but it can be pulled and depleted for anything, licenses, gimmick should come out of subscriptions, which we have a line for that. So like, I'm not understanding. And then like, we, we voted to support the ban, to support sports. I, I agree with that, right? But why does it come out of educational supplies when our teachers don't have pencils and they're running fundraisers online? So this, that's my, I, I don't understand how. Simplify it for me. Like, how can you take money from a $50,000 per building education fund and not allow the teachers to make photocopies? You know what I'm saying? Like, that's my thing. I know that comes out of another line item, but when we have extra that left over in that line item at the end of the year, we're like, no, we can't take it out of there because we need to hold it there or it's gonna go into somewhere else. And where that somewhere else is, I'm not clear on the end, on where it goes. But I've, I've said, like, why don't just, I guess my, I want to go all the way back to just say, how come if each building only gets $50,000? That's a guesstimate. I know that's not accurate or 100% accurate. If each building gets $50,000 each, how come and who gets to decide how that's spent instead of on educational supplies, which is budgeted in March?
Yep.
So, so if I may, so we, and we'll be doing it shortly. So it's the building principal who works with their team to develop their budget.
Who okay's it?
What's that?
Who okay's it after the building?
So the building principals will come and have a conversation with central office and say, you know, and there's a formula, say, a student, a school has 400 kids. And then it's $5 per kid comes up with their overall budget. It's up to the building principal to say, what category are they putting in money? So year over the year, they might say, we're comfortable with spending 1,500, 2,000. But the building principal comes up and presents a budget to Mr. Gray, myself and other people in central office, defending their budget, whether they need more, they need less. But they present the budget to us based on their school data. Right? So they should be having conversations with their faculty and staff to say, what do we need? And they make their priorities and it gets presented to us. And then we can say, hey, there's a little more money here. We can transfer things. But the building principals, based on their school data, presents it to us. And that's where these categories come in at the beginning, snapshot in time. You know, they might get an extra classroom after the budget is passed and then they need more money, or they might lose students and get less money. But it comes from the building principal based on, they should be collecting, they have a conversations with their educators to say, this is what we need. And they'll look at, you know, we look at the last five years to see if that number is good, bad and different. But it comes from the building to us. And so if teachers need more supplies, they should be having a conversation with their building principal to say, how much are they asking for? Because in some buildings, and again, I think this goes back years to years, and I've heard it not only in Nashua, but in other districts, the answer was always, no, we have no money. And so teachers would not even approach a building principal to say, I need $50 more purchasing. So before they go to outside vendors, they actually have a conversation with the building principal to say, I need more. So that should be happening. And that's how the money gets coded, right? So that's how the budget, it rolls up to us. And then we take each individual school and then we present that, those information as a district. It gets all rolled in. But it starts, every building principal meets with us. And it'll probably start in January. They present the budget and that's how it's built. Mr. Smith will come in, Mr. Rodriguez will come in. They'll present their budgets, but they give us. they give us the money based on their needs and their data.
I think to Dr. Andre's point too, and I just, I'm not gonna lie, something's not settling well to me to hear that, um, teachers don't feel supported or don't even have money for pencils. That is not the case. I think to Dr. Andre's point, uh, there is educational supplies that we as a district and based off of each individual principal, they are telling us, here's how much out of my overall building budget, we wanna go ahead and put into educational supplies. We as a district should not be seeing things like pencils and paper out on third parties that we do support, Donors Choose is one of them, um, to be asking for pencils or paper. That is something we as a district should be supplying, and we as a district absolutely are supplying. In addition to that, to Dr. Andre's point, if a principal or a staff member doesn't feel that they have the proper educational supplies, furnitures, fixtures, um, cafeteria tables, we've done a lot of talking about over this last year, that staff member really should be going to their building principal first for support from a funding standpoint. If they are not getting the support there, they absolutely can then come to Dr. Andre and I for support. Donors Choose should only be being utilized for special projects like STEM or certain things that we as a district don't necessarily have in our day-to-day curriculum. So hopefully that answered the questions you were looking for. Um, I think in addition, this, we've never said that you can't transfer certain money. The one area we can't transfer is if we take money from wages to offset contract services, we, we can't then say, okay, contract services isn't what we expected, now let's take that money and move it back into wages. The benefits as well is the other area without board level approval and Board of Alderman approval. We can't say, and I think throughout this, it's been fairly clear, that we can't take that benefit money and move it into other areas that we need for financial support, right? The benefit money is the number at the end of the fiscal year, if there's money remaining and it happens to be a portion of benefits, all the benefit money goes back to the city of Nashville.
Um, I, I have a question. Now, we, um, we talked, um, last month about changing the amount of, for you to bring forward to us, um, to get approved for certain things, but the amount of money for transfers that we need to approve is very low. And I'm wondering, you know, in comparison to, you know, a hundred eighty million dollar budget, a thousand dollars is really not that much. Um, why is the transfer level, the amount that we have to approve so low? And when did that start and how did this come about? Is this typical that schools do this transfer report?
So let me give you my kind of two cents and then Dr. Andre can, I'm sure, hop in as well. Um, I'm shocked actually, um, that we bring so much forward related to the transfers, right? To your point, um, we have a two-hundred-million-dollar budget. Um, as long as we are spending within that two-hundred-million-dollar budget, there's plenty of checks and balances along the way to say, whether it's purchases over ten thousand still have to come forward, whether it's transfers over a thousand or transfers over a five thousand, all of that still comes to the board for awareness. Um, I have had some conversations with the leadership team to say, does a thousand and five thousand still make sense? I think it does for now, um, at a department and school level, because a lot of these internal, what I call budget transfers that you're seeing, is just the awareness. And again, when we're building the budget, it's a snapshot in time. Um, you know, one of the, one of the updates, or excuse me, one of the transfers that is in here is for the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center wasn't a hundred percent, uh, excuse me, a hundred percent set up when we first did the budget. Um, so just like your home budget, things change, right? So we gotta ebb and flow. Um, but we're not necessarily moving money out of certain areas that, based off of RSAs or regulations, we're not allowed to touch. Um, I would be open to having a conversation if we think a thousand dollars or five thousand is too little. Um, you know, ultimately, that's the board's decision with us as the leadership team, but I, I do think it still gives some good oversight and what I would call from a prior auditor experience, it gives you that control in place. Um, so it's always been a thousand and then five thousand, um, for approval related to transfers.
Just in my experience, um, it's always been a supporting document. It hasn't been as discussed as thoroughly as, right? And, um, even with Mr. Donovan going back, you know, I would be on, um, other, you know, districts, but we would go over like the monthly expenditures, like at a high level, and then this was an attachment or a supporting document of like where transfers were. We weren't going line by line or transfer by transfer because it was captured in the higher end. So it, it, I don't think it's a bad thing, I think it's more about transparency of where things are going, but at the end of the day, like, the, the numbers are captured.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, that's cool. Thank, um, thank you. Thank you for explaining that to me, how it came about, that we, we see them. Um, all right, so I'm gonna make a motion to, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the transfer report. Um, let me do it officially. A motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six September transfer report.
Um, second.
Thank you. And, um, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so that's approved. And I believe that we are finished for the night, so I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
All right, so all in favor say aye.
Um, aye, but I have one more thing to say.
Oh, what is that?
Um, I just wanted, um, to point out about Ray Guarino and give, um, respect and honor to his family and thank him for being the champion for our public school education for the time that he served on the board and throughout, because he was a powerful, um, figure in what the board looks like today. And thank you for everything that he did.
Well, thanks, thanks, John. That was a really nice thing to say. Um, I agree a hundred percent. Um, all right, so we voted in favor of adjourning, and so we're adjourned at six fifty-nine PM. And, um, thank you, Dr. Andre and Dr., uh, Mr. Gray. Thank you.